Here.
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 Okay, a moment of silence and then we'll do the televisions.
The televisions to the United States of America into the Republic, which stands one legging and undergone indivisible with liberty and justice.
We have the agenda in front of us. Any questions or issues about the agenda?
Looks good.
Nope. All right. From the audience. Let's consider the minutes of last month. We just got them tonight. They went over that. I didn't see anything extraordinarily. Did anybody, did everybody have a chance to look at this?
I think they're fine. Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes of the meeting from April the twenty, twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Everybody forward say aye.
Aye.
Cast. First item we have is the conditional use review for fourteen Phillips Lane.
Hello, my name is John Mahoney. I represent the applicant.
Can you please go to the.
Button, right? My name is John Mahoney. I'm an attorney from Paola. I represent the applicant, the head owner of the property, Martin Powell, who would like to have a home built there by the Rotelli Development Group. With me is Bryn Shaker, B R Y, and then S C H A F F G R. As the engineer on the project. We were here last month at a time before the zoning hearing board had rendered a decision concerning a variance application pertaining to construction in steep or very steep slopes. Last week, the zoning hearing board voted to approve the two variants that had been requested. And we're looking at a conditional use application that again has to do with approval of the construction in an area of steep slopes. When we were here last month, we went through all the notes on the plan having to do with stormwater management, erosion and sediment control. A lot of questions were asked of the engineer for the project. The planning commission said there seems to be some loose ends. That was towards the end of the meeting. The loose ends where our zoning hearing board hasn't made a decision or hasn't made a decision. And the shade tree commission has not made a recommendation. At about five fifteen today, the shade tree commission voted to approve the landscape plan that was submitted. It's been the subject of some onsite examination by the township arborist and they registered landscape architect hired by the applicant. They did an actual tree count with an indication as to how many trees would have to be taken down, how many are invasive, how many are non-invasive? And what canopy trees will have to be planted and other trees that could be planted with a realistic assessment of how many trees could be planted and survived with a fee and lieu to be worked out, determined pursuant to a judgment call, I guess, or a formula that I'm not aware of by the board of supervisors ultimately when the conditional use approval hopefully is granted. So we're here to get a favorable recommendation concerning the conditional use application and to answer any questions that the mission might have concerning the design.
I have a question. First of all, just to clarify again.
Yes.
You're saying that you've got both variances approved by the zoning hearing board, right?
Yes. I've received written notification of that.
Right. And the landscape plan was reviewed by the arborist and by the shade tree commission?
Yes.
In both. Who that was agreed?
The, the arborist did more than approve it. The arborist did some correction of some of the mathematical calculations based on the circumference of the, the trees, determined that some of them, there are no heritage specimens on the tract, which is really good news for us. But did a double check of the count that was proposed on the landscape plan and concluded that the landscape plan was accurate with the exception of some of the trees aren't quite as big as you thought they were. So we'll make some adjustments on how many need to be planted at canopy level and so forth.
Does it mean that you have to add a few trees?
Uh. We're, we're to add some trees, but we're to probably pay some money in because if you follow the mathematical formula prescribed by the zoning ordinance, it would obligate the developer, the owner to plant more trees than would likely survive. So engineering sometimes makes more sense than regulations. And in this instance, the engineering recommendation is your landscape plan looks good. We recommend that the shade tree commission approve the landscape plan and they did at five o'clock today.
And the engineering comment comes from what? From the township engineer?
Uh, from Mr. Rocheback, who is, I believe, the township.
Arborist.
Arborist. Thank you.
Okay, and I have a question about the letter that you wrote written by Carter Engineering back on March twenty-sixth. And under soil erosion and sediment control review. Maybe it's a typo or what? No, I'm sorry, above that, item nine of the, of the application. Okay, item nine says the plan is currently under review with the DCCD for adequacy of erosion control measures. Have you submitted plans to the Delaware County Conservation District? I haven't seen any correspondence about that.
I mean, yes, there was a plan submitted to Delaware County Conservation District. I don't have it.
I think you should step up to the microphone, please.
Yeah.
I don't have a copy of that letter with me, the review. It may have been an email. I think there was. If it was a letter or an email, there was only like four or five comments from the conservation district which we addressed and resubmitted.
To whom?
Pardon me?
To whom did you resubmit to the conservation?
Delaware County Conservation District.
Did you also send a copy to the township or township engineer?
The, the plans were done concurrently with the plan that was just most recently submitted to the township.
Right, but does a township have any record of it? So can the township engineer?
I, I can send a record. I can send it. If I, I am not sure if they were copied on the email. I don't have it in front of me. But if they weren't, I can easily forward it.
So what did the response by the conservation district say?
The, the initial response?
What did they do?
Well, I think we're still waiting on that. We're still waiting on their second response, which I'm anticipating them to approve it, but there was nothing major in their, their review.
Any comment from the board?
That I believe that the zoning hearing board listed a variety of conditions to the granting of the variance. And that would include the issuance of all permits and, and approvals necessary. You can confirm that the applicant has agreed with all of the conditions established by the zoning hearing board and is, is planning to abide by those conditions?
The answer is not yet. I have received notice of the decision. I cannot.
Do you need to go to the podium, please, sir?
The, the answer is not yet. The zoning hearing board's solicitor issued a letter indicating that the applications had been approved. But we're expecting to see a formal written decision that would probably include findings of fact and conclusions as the application was contested. And it will specify what the conditions and safeguards that are mentioned in the solicitor's letter to me will be. I don't, I don't know what those are. If, if they are obtain a, an erosion sediment control letter of adequacy from the, from the Delaware County Conservation District, the answer is yes. But I don't know what, what others control.
They were enunciated at the meeting. I happened to watch the replay of it by the solicitor to the zoning hearing board. And I assume, I don't know if you were there or not.
I wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there was. I was aware that the record had been closed.
Right.
And so I, I, I didn't. And I, I know that there will be some discussions, but the, the actual conditions will be reflected in something the solicitor will, has prepared and is in the process of getting signed. So when I see those conditions, you know, the odds are they will be entirely feasible and satisfactory and there won't be a, a problem, but I, I don't know what they are yet.
Let, let me catch up a little bit and maybe for the audi- audience's edification also. So one of the issues at the last meeting was that we would like to see approval from the zoning board.
Right.
They approved it subject to conditions.
Yes.
You're going to say, hmm, I don't like that. I want to change this. They're going to have to reapprove?
No, I, no, there is no changing their decision. Their, their decision will be.
Subject to certain requirements being met.
Absolutely.
Are you going to meet all of those requirements?
So far as I know, so far as I know, yes, but I don't know what those are.
I would think your only recourse, if you disagreed with the conditions, would be to appeal the decision.
That's correct. That's right. That's right. If, if it says this is subject to bringing about world peace. And to say, I have to take an appeal. They have no ability to deliver world peace.
That, that's a coy response. I understand where you're coming from.
If it's.
My.
Pay any amount of money.
Excuse me, sir.
Okay.
The point of what I'm trying to say is if you are going to agree with it, maybe we'd be more apt to approve it. If you're not going to agree with it, but you want our approval tonight, I'm not sure how comfortable I am there. Maybe someone can educate me my ignorance a little bit. Maybe you can as to what I'm missing in that.
Well, I think, I think that you could make a rec- remember, you're a recommending body to the board of supervisors.
Yes.
And so you can make a recommendation to the board of supervisors who are not going to hear this until June. That, and by that point, the decision will be made and be put forth. I think it's June, isn't it? Or is it? I think it's.
I think that's.
So, so they're scheduled to go. So I think that there's every right that you could say.
Subject to the.
Subject to them agreeing to the, the things in the zoning hearing board, you would recommend moving this forward.
Fair.
If, if there was something that you feel personally that needed to be added to that, you could say we want this other condition added in the conditional use side of it. Got it.
One of the conditions that was also added as part of the zoning approval was to acquire an MPDS permit, which this project doesn't meet that quite meet that standard of a disturbance of one acre. The engineer can correct me if I'm wrong. But they, because it was so close, the zoning hearing board felt it was appropriate to place that condition on the property for them to meet that higher, higher standard.
Well, this, this is news to me right now. So this is the reason why the plan was submitted to the conservation district, right?
Yes.
But it's not that just happened, you just happened to send it to them.
I'm not sure about that.
And the conservation district has not weighed in on this yet. Or do we not? Am I, I was not at the annual meeting, so I need.
Well, no, well, it's the first time I hear about the conservation district. So the question is, and this is for the NPDS permit, which is a difficult permit.
Yes.
So I don't know. I'm not sure I'm comfortable in voting on it tonight because the, the NPDS may take time and have more restrictions. It's not a, a simple review.
So, but if, 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 if it's as simple as saying they need to meet the qualifications of the NPDS permit, you can make that recommendation as a, as a condition of your approval. You don't need to have it. You, you, you don't need it to come back to you if that's what the piece is. If there's something specific that you feel like is not being handled, that's a different story. But if you're saying that there's a, I mean, just like we expect them to meet all the qualifications of a building permit. You, I mean, you don't have that building permit before you make the decision in a land development case. You know, so it's the same, very similar type of thing. This, they're going to have to get building permits. They're going to have to meet all those requirements. It, whatever permits are required as part of the process, they're going to have to get all those permits. They're going to have to meet all those requirements. And if they don't, they can't go forward.
Right.
And that will stop the project, even if our board, the super, if you agree and our board agrees and the zoning hearing board approved it, if they can't get the permits approved for whatever reason that is a legitimate reason not to, it would stop the project.
That's right. Yes, as a condition, yes.
Okay. Or do you want to make the, well, I think.
So what I'm able to gather from that, which I, I think is absolutely accurate, is planning commission could favorably recommend the conditional, approval of the conditional use application conditioned on there being no appeal from the zoning hearing board decision and obtaining any and all necessary outside agency approvals.
Before that, I would like to ask township engineer, are there any comments from your side?
There were. There were, there were several comments that, that we issued to the applicant. They are working on, working on completing those comments and we are going back and forth with them to, to satisfy all of the comments that, that we had for them.
Did you review all the, the plans and are you satisfied at this point?
We are satisfied as long as they can satisfy our, our comments that we have remaining.
And what makes up the comments?
It's mostly, it mostly consists of it mostly consists of them having to I'm sorry. It mostly pertains to the conditional uses that we're, that we're looking at today. It also involves approval of the NPDS permit and other, other various minor technical, technical aspects of the project as well.
Are these the conditions outlined in the two letters of April the seventeenth by?
Yes.
By your office?
Yes.
Yeah. The, the conditions of the zoning hearing board also specifically require compliance with all of those letters. But those letters, so they, they were fairly comprehensive in establishing what the conditions of approval were. But just from watching it.
Any common questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Come forward to the podium, please. Debbie Ward in forty-seven, twenty-three Mill Hollow Lane, Newton Square. Is there a time at which they are able to start taking down trees before they've actually received permission to proceed? Before June, when they start clearing the property? This is my question.
I think there would be a difference between taking, it is private property. They do have a right to take down certain number of trees. Land disturbance would be a different subject. So how they did that would make the difference.
So they could start taking down trees?
Private property.
Okay.
Any other?
Robert Tommels. Thomas? Robert Tommelson, T O M I L S O N, fourteen, I'm sorry, I'm at I'm at twenty Phillips Lane. It's the adjacent property to fourteen. Mr. Neese, are you the solicitor?
No, I'm the township manager.
Okay. So I'm a little disturbed. And we're going to consider approving something that the applicant hasn't approved yet. So that's just an aside. With respect to the property, my concern, if you look at the statute, is that this board, I think it's this board, needs to make sure that my property is not going to be disturbed. And I'm very concerned. I already have a tremendous amount of water that comes onto my property at a very fast rate. In fact, I've talked with the township engineer about this years ago. The property next door, which is the one that's at issue here, the slopes are twice, three, four times the slopes on my property. And I am downstream from him and I know that they have some things that they've put in place.
Excuse me, just a moment. Excuse me, Timothy, can you put the plan up? So we can see which property is yours?
Sure. I don't know how much detail you want to see on this.
All right. Well, we have the, the.
So, Mr. Thompson, why are you concerned that that you will be affected?
Can you pull it up that way a little bit so you can see the street? That's the creek.
Absolutely.
Okay.
This.
It's big enough. All right, we understand.
So the street is on a fairly steep downslope. So you come down into the cul-de-sac. I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac. I'm the property right here. My house is that little triangle you see just right up in the left-hand corner of the drawing. That's the corner of my house. This all slopes towards my property. Currently, there are about two thousand. That's what's holding the soil and holding the water. Making sure it doesn't come onto my property or go in the creek. One of the things that's being proposed is taking all of those trees down. And I have said that to the applicant because I think they are going to come down. Why do I know? Because I had to take the trees down in front of my house because the streets started falling and they fall right onto the house. And I don't know how he's going to landscape this. But there's no way to make that flat. So all those trees are going to be leaning at his house. So it falls in a real conflict. I know it's not yours because maybe it's a zoning issue. I don't know how you divide that up. How you allocate that responsibility.
Mr. Thompson, if you're going to walk and look at the map, that's fine. If you'll take the mic with you, I just, we just want to be able to hear you.
Sorry. So as I understand it and looking at the statute, you're supposed to consider any adverse effect at taking down the trees, the drainage, the water, the effect that it's going to have on my property. That's my concern.
Well, it is a part of the code anyhow that adjacent properties must not be affected. And just looking at the topographic map here, it looks like grades don't slope toward your property. And for the development itself or the grading, they are actually showing a sway to be put along the property line. So at least according to this plan, looks okay. This is incorrect that I cannot tell here.
One other thing to consider is that there was a plan modification from the original submitter after township engineer did their initial review, which required the house to be slid more eastward away from Mr. Thompson, the shared property line, in order to create a swell to further protect.
Right, the swelling.
So, so as I, as you read that in the grades, it appears that that slope controls the water between the adjacent, the shared property line and directs it to that basin. The long narrow configuration at the top of the plant. So that swell directs that stormwater that flows through the property into the swell and then directs it to that.
Well. My understanding from the last meeting or prior meeting was a question was asked about the existing state. And upon the new basin and drainage being input in, it would be performed better than the existing property. I don't know how to say that's true or false.
Well, I think that, that, that's Mr. Johnson. I will put Tony on the spot, but Mr. Johnson did the original review. And obviously, that's the whole point of the statute. The order is to control that water to, to have less runoff during each storm event. And Tony can probably explain it better than.
But I think this is not what Mr. Thompson is, is asking. The grades here are tough. They're steep and there is, at least theoretically, a potential of posing an effect on, on adjacent properties. Perhaps it is a good thing that now they have to obtain the NPDS permit because the conservation district may also require some protection along the property lot. And there are ways to protect against not only runoff, but erosion movement, sediment movement, et cetera.
But if I understood the conversation correctly, and I'm sorry, I, I don't know your name.
My name's Andy.
Andy. I, I, I think that Andy said that they are going to get the permit because they don't need it because they're going to meet the one acre requirement. They're not going to exceed that. So they don't need it, is that?
They technically did not meet the standard for an NPDS permit because there are less than an acre of disturbance. However, that was the township engineer's suggestion. Because of how close that they were, I think originally the plan, you were at nine point one nine point one.
Nine point one.
Yeah, point nine, right. So they weren't quite at the threshold of one acre, but the condition was placed on the application to acquire that NPDS permit regardless of that.
So that's interesting and that would make me feel very good. And I have sympathy for you, attorney for the applicant. I know that you haven't seen the order and I haven't seen the order either, but I was here. I thought I heard you will apply for the permit. Then I deduced from that, that if it wasn't one acre, he wouldn't get the appointment. He would just go on his way. It sounds like there's a requirement that you actually receive. That's your.
They have to achieve it, right. They have to acquire an NPDS permit.
So, and, and so now we see why the applicant's attorney can't start making commitments. The, the order was quite long. Actually, there was a laundry list of items that we're going to have to, you're going to have to abide by. So I understand why he can't at this time tell you whether or not he'll abide. So I guess I would, I would hesitate or caution you against approving something when you, even the applicant hasn't said he's going to approve.
But Mr. Thompson, as Andy, the zoning officer, and as Steve, the township manager, said, okay, we can make a recommendation to the board of supervisors approved with a condition of one, two, three, including the NPDS permit. So if any of these conditions are not met, the board of supervisors do not have to approve it.
Okay. But they won't approve it. Yeah.
Well, I can't, remember, you're, you're a recommending body. So when it goes before the board of supervisors, though, the board of supervisors is the decision maker in this case. So tonight, what's happening is as part of our process for conditional use, it comes before the planning commission for them to give a recommendation, just like it went to the county for a recommendation. I think that's changed, but it, it's a, it's a recommendation coming back to the board of supervisors so that because these are your fellow residents who serve on this board. And they're going to make a recommendation one way or another to approve with certain conditions or not to approve this plan. And then that will go before the board. Even if this board were to come tonight and say, we don't approve this plan, we think you should deny it. The board is still going to have a hearing on the June twenty.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth meeting. And that is where the final decision is.
Yep, totally understand. I understand that you have the authority and that you, you could conditionally approve or prove that the idea that.
We only recommend. We make recommendations. No approvals.
Yeah, I, yeah. So you'll, you'll make up your minds. You, you, you're, you're in control here. That's all I have to say. You have any questions with me?
No, I'm just, I, I, I think that you, you may be able to be satisfied with that. You know, there are conditions. If we recommend, we recommend approval with all those conditions. And the board of supervisors will consider those conditions and are not likely to approve if the conditions are not met.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to debate you about this, but here's the problem. Just like the attorney for the applicant. And I don't know if anybody here has, but I haven't seen the order. I have memory and Andy was able to correct me on one thing and I hope he's right. That's wonderful. So we're, we're sort of saying, yes, whatever they said, it, it must be good because it's them. So we approve it. We recommend because they said it, but none of us have seen the order. I haven't seen the order. The applicant's attorney hasn't seen the order. That, that's really why.
Yeah, and, and this board, the commission, the planning commission could make the recommendation to the board of supervisors that the NPDS permit be required as well. And so, I mean, and it would stand on its own because this is really a separate process from what happened in the zone.
You see, and sorry, but that actually adds something interesting. So, let's say that we did have the written order, and Andy is correct, that you have to achieve the permit of the NPDS, whatever it is, that would be substantive, but you don't know that, and I don't know that, Andy says he, he believes he knows that, but we haven't seen the written document. So, how could you recommend that they achieve a permit? I mean, I suppose you could independently say, we don't care what the zoning commission said, we believe that's that's okay with me, obviously. So, alright, that's all I have.
Thank you.
The other point, the, the purpose of the planning commission is to look at the plan and to see if there's any glaring ambitions, any other concerns that you specifically have. I mean, you have the township engineer here, you have a representative, representation from what the zoning hearing board has determined. Uh, you have a representation of what the shade tree commission has agreed upon. So, you as a, as a board, uh, or committee amongst yourself to look at these plans, do you see anything that's glaring that sticks out to you that would be a concern?
Well, there are concerns, obviously, otherwise there were not, would not have been so many discussions about it. Uh, the site is a very tough site, the slope is steep, and well, it's not a great site. Yes, there are concerns, but
I agree.
Question is, if uh, it can be, uh, it can be built and meet all the requirements and all the conditions? If so, I think we, we have to uh allow it to happen.
So, I, I would say we got sidetracked after my, I wanna come back to my comment, we had a discussion in the prior meetings. Hey, this basin and irrigation setup, subject to NPDS and the, seeing the letter and all, I get all that, it will be better than the existing format of the existing property. That was a discussion we had before. If somebody can tell me, yes, and it's lawyered up and papered up the right way, I'm good. Can someone say that?
Who said it before?
It was a discussion point in that.
County, sorry. At the very end of the last planning commission meeting, Bryn Schaefer said, there will be less stormwater coming off of this site after the construction than there is right now.
And remind me who Bryn Schaefer is?
He's that fellow here, and he's the engineer who drew up the plan.
Thank you.
And he's the one who submitted the erosion and sediment control letter of adequacy application received, a very brief review letter, submitted another one. On the subject of the, the NPT's application, I understand there might be a condition imposed requiring a NPT's application be obtained. If somebody is fifteen years old, really good at driving a car, I still can't get a driver's license in Pennsylvania. If you've got a really good stormwater management plan, it's less than one acre. The response from the issuing agency, the EPs, could be, I'm sorry, but you're only disturbing nine tenths of an acre of land, and we can't give you a NPT's permit, because this is a federal program, and we are supposed to approve or disapprove applications when there is more than one acre of land disturbance. The engineering orientation, if you will, that was used in developing this plan was, save as many trees as possible, disturb as little land as possible, and make sure that the stormwater is controlled in such a way that there's less of it coming off the site after construction than there is before. And that, that is the design that has been developed. So, I, I understand there's only here where it could say, you've gotta get a zone, you gotta get a NPT's permit. If the, if the response from the EP is too bad you don't disturb one point one acres, we would happy to give you a NPT's permit, but we can't, because it doesn't fit the application criteria. That would be an unfair way of saying denial of a plan that is a very responsible design.
But for, so from my perspective, I, I just wanted, as a recommending body, not the approval to the board of supervise, yeah, the board of supervisors level, if I can see from an engineering perspective and be told, hey, this is gonna be better than the existing property, the trees, I understand, the water runoff issue is the one for me.
I agree.
Right, if I can hear that that's locked.
We confirm that, that, that was under, that was under type review on our end, and we've confirmed that it will, it will be, it will have, there will be less runoff in the proposed condition than there is today.
Is, is he aware of how, how it works, you know, the runoff, the basin, is he, are you?
How it will be better.
I would refer to an engineer that along that.
You have to understand, too, the township borrowers, they did prepare a landscaping plan, identified all the trees, and went through that process to the satisfaction of township borrowers. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm speaking on his behalf, he, I'm, he's not here.
Hi, I'm Sheryl Sullivan Thien, I'm the chair of VAC. We did give you a five-page letter, and we gave you some information about infiltration. And one thing you might wanna check out is on page three, item number two, we gave you EPA's concerns regarding infiltration and their failures.
Sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you with the microphones, and you're shuffling the papers.
EPA's recommendations and their concerns from the EPA on infiltration state, uh, trenches, and some of the best management practices. We also gave you some issues regarding their failure rates. We are, if you looked at our EAC letter, um, and we did ask previously for the population test, and I, we have I, I, I know we, we're just a recommend on, also, the EAC recommends not to approve this property, primarily because you're asking for a lot. In our steep slopes, they're allowed fifteen percent, they're asking for thirty-three. In our very steep slopes, they're allowed, asking for thirty-one point one percent, and we're only allowed five. So, if you were a child, and you have diabetes, and you're allowed to have one cookie, but in that analogy, you're getting six cookies. So, it might make you happy, it might, the applicant deserves the right to have it home. But I think the ask is more than it should be granted. So, we've given you the information, we also stand really firm against this. We, uh, you're gonna hopefully get a expert to give witness testimony for our board of supervisors. But we're asking you to hold to, to the conditions. Ask the applicant to reduce the size of the house. Previously, this property was through the zoning and hearing and the planning commission, I think, three years ago. Their total square footage that was allowed was thirty-two hundred. This property's footprint is thirty-two hundred, with, I believe it's forty-six, forty-seven uh, square feet. So, it's a huge ask. Please just uphold our laws, uphold our audiences. He's allowed to build a house, just make it smaller. And EAC gave you a letter, please read into that further. And even maybe if you wanna wait till next month, when you get all these other information, before you make an informed decision. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'd like, uh, just a moment, Paul, please. I'd like to go back to, for a moment, uh, to the erosion control. No, you can sit down, thank you. So, the, whether the, the NPDS permit is obtained or not, I'm missing here, I don't see an erosion control plan, which plan did you submit to the uh, conservation district?
Rating permit and erosion control one.
This is I don't know, this is not the one that that you.
Yeah, this is just the last one.
Plan that was submitted The plan that was submitted to the township
Yeah, okay.
That was revised April twelfth was also submitted to the conservation district.
And that.
Entitled grading permit and erosion control plan.
Right, okay, so this is the plan that I, I see here, the one that was revised April twelve. And uh so what are you, what kind of protection do you have along the slope? I see some heavy line in there, and I'm not sure right now what it means. Uh, are you uh, proposing super silt fences, or what?
Those are uh, compost filter socks, twenty-four inch compost filters.
And they're existed only during construction, correct?
They're, they're about construction, but uh, they're just mulch-filled tubes. They can be left in place after construction, with no detriment to the area.
Is that usually the?
Typically, that's what's done, is they're just left in place, the tubing is biodegradable, and then the mulch is just extra you know, fertilizer.
And grass grows over the areas?
Correct, yeah.
Tony, do you know if Eric reviewed the erosion control aspect of it?
Yeah, he did, he did, and I don't believe there was any comments specific to the erosion and sediment control plan. Um, there. So, that, that would make, uh, that would make me believe that, that he was, um, that he was comfortable with it. Uh, when I reviewed it myself, I found no, no issues with the erosion and sediment control plan.
Well, uh, I have one, I'm not the reviewing engineer on this, but I have one big comment, I would think, that uh, those uh compost tubes, whatever uh, you want to call them, are supposed to be along grade lines, not perpendicular to grade lines, and so, certainly not when the slopes are so. So, I, I, what I, what I'm getting at is, if, for whatever reason, uh, the uh, conservation district does not issue the NPDS permit because the area is less than one acre, I would, uh, I would like the township engineer to get back on this on the erosion control aspect of it.
Okay.
The plan will require erosion control letter back to the conservation.
No, well, if, if it is if it is less than one acre, the, and as you say, they may not they may decide not to review it for the NPDS permit, then they will not even issue an adequacy letter. Because it will not be under the jurisdiction.
We still, so under the current plan, we'll still get an adequacy letter, and then whether or not we have to get an NPDS permit on top of that uh, would be a different issue, but we will have an adequacy letter imminently, I'm just looking at, I did find in my emails the resubmission, they had three comments on our plan. Uh, they were all very minor, we resubmitted the plan, and we're just waiting for that adequacy letter. They haven't said we won't review this, because you don't have an acre, right? They have not said that.
Did they say anything about reviewing it? So, you're saying that they will issue an adequacy letter, does this mean that they will not uh, review it for the NPDS permit?
That, that issue hadn't been brought up, I mean, there's no, there was no reason to, because the threshold for a permit was not reached. So, that, that issue wasn't discussed with the district, because today was the first day we heard anything about an NPDS permit.
Well, we, we certainly haven't had held that for the first time. We didn't know that you submitted to the conservation.
We did submit for an erosion control adequacy letter, that's correct, yep. It was submitted, there was three minor comments, it was resubmitted, we're waiting for the adequacy letter.
What were the comments?
I don't have a copy of the comments, but I have a response. There was something about the note on the the limit of disturbance. They wanted additional compost sock up slope from the trench during construction. And there was some minor comment about the level spreader discharge. Those were their comments.
And their comments were issued when? What is the date?
December thirteenth.
December?
Yeah. But we resubmitted it at the end of March.
Two months ago?
Well, I know, actually, no, that was when the response was written. I'm sorry. It was resubmitted. I don't know exactly when, because we had provided it to the applicant at, uh, on April ninth, so I'm not sure when they took it and resubmitted it.
When?
They made.
So, you submitted it in December?
Originally.
Originally, and you got a response when?
There, I, I don't know when we submitted it, I don't have that information in front of me. I said we submitted it, we got our, our initial review letter in December. Yeah. Yeah, thi- this process has been dragging on.
And when did you formally request the conservation district to review it for an NPDS permit?
That hasn't been done.
So, there was a condition made by whom, by the zoning?
By the zoning hearing board, right. At the la- at the last meeting, last Thursday. So, that was a condition of their approval at last Thursday's meeting.
So, if the conservation district does not even know that they were supposed to, to review it for that permit, there is no reason for them to, to do that, if nobody tells them. So, the fact that you submitted back in December, yes, they, they see that this is below one acre, no problem, they'll issue you a letter. But they don't even know that the township wants them to review it for that, that permit. Where are we standing with that?
Yeah.
So, I think officially, uh perhaps the township, perhaps the zoning board needs to write a letter to them to give it some authority, because you are not asking them for it.
I think that once, I think it once, the the applicant has yet to receive the letter from the zoning hearing solicitor telling them the requirements that they have to meet. That will happen probably sometime if not this week, early next week, the, the, the solicitor for the zoning hearing board will send out that letter. That's when the applicant will know. In order to fulfill the requirements, the applicant will have to, they will review all those requirements, and they will make a decision whether they want to just meet those requirements, or whether they want to appeal the decision of the zoning hearing board. If they make the decision to meet those requirements, they know that those requirements have to be met before their permits can be approved by the township for building. So, what I'm, what I, I don't think we need to worry about that piece of the process tonight, me, other than the fact, if you wanna say that you wanna make sure that that's met, you can do that and add that as a condition that you pass on to the board of supervisors. But for them to need a requirement that was decided last Thursday night probably isn't going to happen in this timeframe. And so, my point to you is, I just wanna give you, you know, I mean, you know it exists, because we've heard it. We don't know exactly how it exists, you know, we, I, I think Andy shared what, what, what the intent was. I haven't seen the letter myself to know how that will come out. Um, but the zoning hearing officer will, or the zoning hearing solicitor will write that. He will give that to the applicant, he will give a copy to the township. And Andy can't issue the permit until all those requirements are met.
And this board can further that recommendation, or, and you can add more clarity to it based upon the testing.
Yes, Paul, I'm sorry, but.
Paul Selleck, seven four seven two seven, Mill Hall Lane. So, I walk, my wife and I walk frequently just opposite Uncrum Creek, through the naturelands, uh, woods and the forest. And I disagree with the statement that's been made tonight, where it's been said that after the demolition of all the trees, and the planting of new trees, and the planting of grass, and the the basin, there's gonna be less runoff than there is today. I have never yet seen runoff on the forest floor, never, anywhere. Now, there are little riverlets, there are little gullies that, that sometimes are kind of dry, and then when there's a rain event, they get wet. Now, we walk in with umbrellas, we walk with parkas, we walk in snow, sleet, rain, storms. And we never see the forest floor flooding, ever. This is forest floor, what's there right now. I don't, I disagree that you can. This is forest floor, what's there right now. I don't, I disagree that you can improve on the runoff through all this, uh, development than what's there right now. The other thing is, the news yesterday is there's twenty-five named hurricane storms predicted for this year. And they, they're talking about how warm the Atlantic Ocean is. The big storms that we've had at Mill Hollow are Floyd in ninety-nine, Lee, Irene in ten and eleven. When hurricanes somehow errantly creep up the Delaware Valley and end up around here, we just get hammered. Really hammered. The, 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 actually, the planting of lawn hastens the runoff. It doesn't help the runoff. It, it acts like a sheet metal. So I just want, I want you to go in with your eyes wide open. Storms are worse. The, the climate's changing and we're suggesting we're going to rip out a whole pile of trees and put in other stuff. And that, that's going to be an improvement. I don't think so.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jordy Bracken. I live at forty-seven nineteen Mill Hollow Lane, a neighbor of Paul. Um, I live at that property with my wife, uh, and our family of four. It's downstream of the proposed slope disturbance here this evening. Um, I suggest you do not recommend this plan because of the adverse effects this is going to have on our property.
On your property?
On, on our property, yeah. Be- because we live downstream, we're seeing increased severity and frequency of floods in the creek and.
You're seeing increased severity now?
Yes.
Before any construction is done?
Yeah, there, there, there are more flood events happening in Crumb Creek that are affecting our property over the years. It's, it's becoming more frequent and worse. And so I, I agree with Paul. I, I don't think there's any sort of rational sense that says tearing out mature trees, tearing out a forest, um, is going to make this site better. Mr. Evans, I really appreciate your line of questioning here, being like, I need someone to lock in this question. Is this site going to be better than the natural site with mature trees as it is now? I don't believe the answer by the engineer that's paid for by the homeowner that is saying, yes, it will be better. I simply don't believe that. And the thing about this decision, this recommendation you're making, we can't undo this decision. If you recommend it, this goes forth. We're all going to be left holding the bag as township residents. If we're wrong about this decision and it increases the stormwater runoff into the creek, there's going to be increased costs to all of us as residents and taxpayers of this township. For that reason, I ask you, please do not recommend this plan as it's proposed. We have a stormwater management problem here in the creek, in the township. This will only exacerbate that. So I appreciate your line of question. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, I just wa- want to point out clarification. Yes, you are the property owner's engineer, right? But I was asking that to our township board. If we as a township can verify that what he's saying or NPDS or whoever, if they say, yeah, it will be better. Is, is that? I was kind of directing that at you. Yes, you are the engineer and you had your opinion. Are we able to say an opinion?
Paul, if I may, if I may just clarify the things, what you said and, uh, a lot of people view it this way, from the engineering aspect of it. Um, the, there are certain calculations, there are certain codes that define what storms should be calculated. It's all theoretical. And what, uh, how strong those storms are and how to calculate flows and, uh, what kind of ground cover gives what kind of resistance to, uh, runoff and so. Uh, usually, even though the, uh, conditions keep changing, as Paul said, there are, uh, hurricanes, uh, global warming that creates storms, et cetera, et cetera. In the past, there were fixed numbers that engineers used to calculate how much runoff is created by, by the rainfall of those storms. Now they are more flexible and you can check at any moment for each lo- uh, location, each address, what the, uh, rainfall is and use that. Now, to decide whether it is an improvement of the runoff conditions or not, these are methods of calculations that, uh, are established in the, in the codes basically. And, uh, doesn't, it is theoretical and it tells you that, uh, if you, uh, restrict the flow out of your stormwater management facility, uh, you can, uh, reduce the calculated runoff versus the pre-development, uh, runoff rate. Okay? Uh, this is if everything works properly, sometime, not always it works properly. Sometimes after a certain period of time it changes. But these are the standards of the profession. Also regarding removal of, uh, mature trees and planting of.
I'm sorry, summarize that first point for me, what you just said, Shimon, for myself and the audience. There was a lot of words.
Right. So in a few words and trying to simplify it, what the engineer did when he designed this, um, project, he followed the, uh, guidelines of the profession which are established in the codes.
What you're saying is, yes, my calculations say this, but it might not be the outcome. Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think he's saying that.
Or what do you say?
Saying that.
I'm asking you to summarize that for me.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, but also considering changes in the, uh, storms and rainfall and so on. I'm not sure that ten year, ten years from now will be the same. Perhaps it will be tougher. Perhaps, perhaps it will be, uh, more problematic. But that doesn't mean that we should not approve something that meets all the requirements.
I'm with you. Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to understand what you were saying.
Just, just be cautious, especially when, uh, the storms are intensified. That is, that is true.
Wait, or, or because the storms are getting stronger, our codes are going to change and we're not going to approve or deny something that we may have done in the past?
Not necessarily, depending on how they're written. So I'll give you an example, and again, I don't want to bore everybody. Um, in the past, when you open the, uh, code book of any municipality, you will see that there is a table which says that, uh, there are a series of theoretical storms, okay? They are considered by periods by, uh, by, uh, frequency. So one year storm, two year storm, up to a hundred years, okay? And, and for each storm, there was a number. Then, uh, nowadays, because whoever writes the codes realizes we cannot stick to those numbers. Now they say you can check, uh, the storm, uh, rank on the, online now. There is something that is called Atlas fourteen. It's a federal website that, uh, tells you anywhere in the country what the, uh, uh, rainfall is for each storm. Okay? And I'm sure that this is where this engineer looked at, okay? So what I'm saying is, ten years from now, when you look at the Atlas fourteen for Newton square, you'll see different numbers all the time. That's what I'm saying. The, the storms are getting tougher. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't do anything.
I think the point is, is that this plan is designed under the current ordinance. And it is not, and, and can't be reflective of every higher intensity storm that we see. We don't know. It's called trying to control mother nature. You, you don't control her, you manage it. You manage within certain parameters. So that's where we're, that's what we're always up against. The public may see an overrun of the system. But it only would be because it's a higher intensity storm.
So whether the property was developed or not.
You ought to see it.
You're gonna see it.
Correct.
Anybody else?
I, I'm not an engineer, but the, the, the issue I think we're discussing is whether the, the, uh, stormwater control improvements being made to the property will reduce the flow of water. The applicant's engineer stated that at the last meeting, I believe our engineer agreed with that concept that the work as designed, um, would reduce the flow of water.
Based on a certain limitation of the ordinance. Based upon a certain limitation in the ordinance.
Right.
That, that's all I'm trying to say is the ordinance speaks to certain rate events. And, and, and the, and I believe and please correct, I'm not an engineer either. I've just been doing this a little while. And, but based upon their review, this design is consistent with the ordinance. What I'm trying to express to the public is the fact that if we see a higher rate event than the design was what, than it was designed for, you're going to see an overflow of the system.
But if nothing were done to the property and there were a higher intensity storm, you would also.
Absolutely. Fair, fair, correct.
And, and, and therefore making an improvement to the property to control stormwater.
Better's the property.
No, Jack, this is not the issue.
Better's the adjacent property. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They are not doing it in order to improve the situation. This is a requirement by the, uh, the code. When you design a new project, you'll have to compare what is called post-development conditions versus the pre-development conditions. And you must not increase runoff for each storm that you calculate. And again, this is quite theoretical. You must not have a higher post-development flow when you compare it to the pre-development flow. So usually you are, you are trying to reduce it a little bit. And this is what he means when he says improvement. What it means is that if everything works well and everything, uh, and they build it exactly per the design, then the, the flow that goes out of the site called the creek would be less than the flow that currently goes out of the, uh, creek. That is all.
And based on the design, does our engineer believe that is the case?
Yes. Yes, we've reviewed, we've reviewed their, their calculations, we've reviewed their design. And, you know, based off of what we're seeing, we have a reason to believe that, that the conditions will, will, will improve from the pre to the post condition. At the very least, at the very least, they will stay the same. The, the condition will stay the same. It will not get worse.
So, and, and I want to, I want to be clear also that, you know, there is a requirement that the applicant will have to enter into a stormwater management agreement. A stormwater, water management agreement, they will pay a fee so that our engineer, the township engineer, will go out and inspect that stormwater management system for the next ten years. That, that fee is paid to cover the next ten years, um, once that stormwater management system, sorry, once that stormwater management system is put in place.
The stormwater management agreement, though, gets recorded against the property. Does that stay on in perpetuity?
It does.
And they're required.
The inspectional right.
They're required to maintain it ongoing. I mean.
Upgrades.
But it only gets perfected for ten years.
Yeah, but, but we're inspecting, we, we covered the cost of inspecting the next ten years. That doesn't mean we, the township still has the right to continue to inspect. And my understanding is we can bill the applicant to go out and do that inspection going forward. But I just want, I mean, we have a ten-year plan in place that's set up by law. And we take that advantage of that and we collect that fee. And there will be an engineer that goes out and inspects it and makes sure that it's functioning as it was designed to function as, and as was built.
And if it's not, what if it's not?
Then we, then we put them on notice and they're required to fix it and bring it back up to the level in which it's supposed to function.
Anybody else from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Francie Strathman, thirty-eight forty Gradyville Road. I just, um, want to piggyback with the environmental council about the concern about the disturbance of steep slopes. And I've seen this happen a few times in the last couple of years. And just wonder why we're not sticking to what the guy, the laws or the township, you know, states is what can be disturbed and what can't. Seems like an awful lot of disturbance.
I, how about the soil erosion? You don't have this. So why have this? Of the soil erosion.
People's, people's seventeenth letter.
Eric, go ahead.
I don't know if you want to an- if you want to answer that question. But I, I can help. I mean, these are, there are zoning requirements.
Yeah.
And, and in any zoning condition, there's an appeal process or a request for variance.
Yeah.
It, it goes between, it goes before the bodies that are, it, it's assigned to. Uh, and then, uh, the steep slope case, it went to the zoning hearing board, um, as part of zoning process. And they achieved that variance approval. And the second phase of that will go before the board supervisors as the conditional use. And that's what you folks are here to do tonight, is kind of offer a recommendation for that, through that conditional use process. So this is the function of that.
Yeah, we, hey, you get a variance if you do X and Y because that'll accommodate for the variance.
So there's always rules and regulations, but we also provide a path forward based upon specific conditions.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Do you want to add something?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to add just, just two things. Uh, don't underestimate, I'm sorry, were you talking to me? Sorry, no, you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Please address the board. Please address the board.
Uh, so just two things. Uh, one, do you know how much the, you say that you've, there, there's money that needs to be set aside for the inspection of the infiltration trench over ten years? Do you know how much that was set aside? Uh, it hasn't been done yet because the approval hasn't been given and I don't, that won't be determined until the design is done and they know what's involved and then the engineer will set that fee. Okay, well, at the zoning hearing, I heard twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, that was, that was the figure that I had heard, uh, which doesn't sound substantial to me or would really. That's a, I will tell you, that's pretty normal for the, for the, uh, uh, for the estimate that I've seen. That's just the inspection fee. That's what they're paying.
All that's paying and to do is just come out, you, what's going on, document it.
I got you.
That's your initial inspection.
That's great. The other thing I would just, um, I know you've said you're an advisory board, so you make recommendations. I would not underestimate your authority. There is a snowball effect here. Say, well, they approved it, right? We already said the zoning board has approved it. Well, we feel pretty good about that. Well, we'll approve it too at some point. Uh, people say, well, look, you know, everyone's already approved this. Uh, no, I disagree. We've sent things to them where they've denied them. Oh, oh, I'm not, yeah, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you have, I'm just saying, don't underestimate your authority just because you're advisory, you're recommended board. I think it means a lot and will have a, a, a real effect on those that are going to receive your recommendation.
Remember, there are conditions. If we, if we recommend approval, it will not be just blank.
But also modifications have been made through the whole process too, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay, can we move forward?
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I think it's important that this board re- mu- must recognize that they're required to evaluate applications for land development approval, in this case, conditional use applications, so that they're consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's our job. We have to look at the comprehensive plan and say, does it work or doesn't it? Is it consistent with what the, the May twenty-seven, two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan says? And this also presents a very thorny issue because it requires us to look at a property owner's right to use his property as he believes versus we don't want it to impair the community, we don't want it to be inconsistent. So when, when this board is faced with that, they look at the comprehensive plan and they say, if the builder or if the owner builds the property consistent with the codes and what is required, then it, then it should be approved, then it should be recommended. Here, a property owner is asking to build a home on a piece of private property. We have very, we, we actually have no restriction to stop that. I mean, so the issue then becomes, does it make sense to recommend this because is it consistent with the comprehensive plan?
And and the plain truth is, it is. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So it 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 would not be appropriate for this board to really say, no, this property owner can't use this property. Um now, what the property owner is asking in this application is for a number of a number of conditional uses, and the conditional uses apply to steep slope and very steep slope. And that has been reviewed by our engineers and there is a stormwater management plan here. And while there is water going into the creek, the development requirements and the building code requirements require this to essentially keep all the water on that property. You can't increase the water. So as a consequence, as long as it's built according to the plans, there should be no problem. So as a matter of fact, it makes sense and frankly, this this board should be making recommendations to approve this. So as a result, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move to, for this body, the planning commission, to recommend the conditional use approval to the board of supervisors related to the property at fourteen Phillips Road, which is being sought by Martin Powell through through his builder and I think it's Rotelli Development. Subject, however, to, of course, compliance with whatever the zoning hearing board decides. We cannot, we can't say you can do it and ignore the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board has its own proceeding, so we certainly are consistent with that. It would also be subject to whatever the conservation district requires. That's actually in the engineer's letters. The engineer, Penoni Associates, has written two letters, both dated April seventeenth, dealing with this approval. Any recommendation by this board, of course, as we always have, would be consistent with those two letters and those recommendations. So as a consequence, I would move that we do recommend the approval of this development subject to all of those conditions. And I would also add that it would be in compliance, whatever Mr. Hospack as the township arborist is requiring, because I know that there's a lot of concern about the trees and and I mean, if you know Mr. Hospack, as we know Mr. Hospack, he's gonna be very conservative and very protective of those trees. So as a result, Mr. Chairman, based on those comments, I would move for recommending the conditional, or making the recommendation for the board of supervisors to consider the conditional approval, conditional approval requests, conditional use approval requests.
Second.
Can I add the NPDS issue?
Yeah, it was the conservation district getting the NPDS.
Yeah, okay, I didn't start to hear.
Yeah, spin it up.
Uh it it may be limited to the conservation district. While we were having this discussion, I replayed in my hearing aids the uh conditions at the zoning hearing board and no NPDS permit was specifically mentioned. It was simply that the applicant complied with all local, state, and federal laws applicable to the project. I'd also like to comment that in addition to the comprehensive plan, that when we're considering a conditional use recommendation, we have to look at the conditions that are applicable to that conditional use. And in this case, the conditions applicable to the conditional use that that the board of supervisors have to decide on include the impact on neighboring landowners, including for water runoff. So that conditional use decision has to take that into account, separate and apart from whatever the zoning hearing board did. But in my mind, the combination of the zoning hearing board having issued a very substantial variance from the steep slope ordinance, they would have gone to extraordinary lengths, I believe, to satisfy themselves that by just, that disturbance would be protected by the improvements that the applicants are proposing. So I take some comfort from that decision, even though I'm not bound by it. Um I also take comfort from the fact that the applicant's engineer and our engineer agree that the conditions on the site regarding water runoff will improve. They may be wrong, but I have to be guided by what, I'm I'm not an engineer. And if our engineer and the applicant's engineer agree that the conditions are going to improve, I feel that I have to be guided by that, so. That's a long way of saying I second the vote.
I said.
Thank you.
Anybody for the supporting this uh motion? You say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? One against? Okay, thank you.
Thank you much.
You're welcome. Got you here for a long time?
Zoning map.
Yeah. We are now uh at uh item eight, zoning map amendment eight point one related to uh the historical recommendation of five seventy-one North Newtown Street Road.
If if I can take just one moment before you start. Um I just wanna, I don't know if all of you were here at the last meeting, so I wanted to take just a quick moment to talk you through this process because I know it's new to you. You've not had this before you, other than, I believe it was before you last month. And so I will try to give you a very short kind of what has happening and what the process is. So um several, a couple of years ago, the township passed historic preservation ordinance. Um in that, there were five properties that were listed as class one. Um and you probably know those properties because they're historic properties around town that you've been used to seeing, the Covered Bridge, the, you know, John West House, the Paper Mill House, the Octagonal School, um uh the Episcopal Church, and I forget the other one right at the moment, uh a missing one.
Barton Bridge.
Oh, Barton, I I think I listed Barton Bridge. Anyway, there's five that are listed as class one. There were a number of properties that are um have been called out by the township that we think that would potentially be class two resources. Uh the county has gone through and um looked at the properties and has actually said they have some historic value. But the, because we don't have a central downtown and all of our historic properties in one place, the process we're going through and notifying everybody is fairly large. Uh you have to notify two hundred feet around, there's all kinds of requirements. And so the board set up a process when it put the ordinance in place that it would, that the historic commission would hear or listen to information and make a recommendation to the board of whether a property should be a class one or a class two. And if the board agreed with that, then that property would be sent before you and also the county his uh planning commission for review and determine whether or not both of you felt that that you would recommend that the board consider making a zoning map amendment change. And I have a property listed as a historic property, either class one or class two. The zoning map amendment change is basically um almost like a zoning change in that it's a, it's an overlay on the map. So in in our map, it's not going to change the underlining zoning. And most of these properties, not all, but most of these properties are in residential areas. But some are not, but most of them are. And it's, no, it doesn't change the fact that it's a residential property, it doesn't change the fact that it's residential zoning. What it does do is it puts a protection on the property so that if a homeowner or building owner, property owner, makes a decision that they want to take and destroy for whatever reason, or take down, or do something to that property, you can go inside and do basically anything you want. It's the exterior that we're protecting. Um it, if they decide to do that, there's what we call basically a cooling off period, that they have to come back before the historic commission, back before the board of supervisors for approval. There's a timeframe that that has to be acted in. I think the whole timeframe is like ninety days from the time in which they submit um a demolition permit um that the township has to act. And really during that time, it's saying, is there a way that you can do what you want to do on your property without destroying the historic value that that property has to our town? If we can't figure that out, then we will still issue the demolition permit. I mean, so it doesn't, it it doesn't mean that they can never potentially do that. It just means that there's a process that it has to go through. The idea, though, behind the ordinance is to protect properties that are in town, that have some historic significance to the town, to our country, to the county, to 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 us and who we are. So what you have before you tonight are two properties um that the historic commission has already reviewed. Uh they have gone to the board of supervisors, the board of supervisors has looked at what their review was and said, we think that's enough that it should go before the planning commission and and the Delaware County Planning Commission for their recommendation. And then it will come back to them and they will decide to advertise for a hearing. So that's where we are tonight, we are before you. It still has to go back to the board for actual public hearings um in which uh the property owner will have a chance to say whether they support or don't support and all of those kind of things. I believe the two tonight um are not supported by the property owners, and so last time they were. Um so this is, this will be a little different.
These are completely different properties.
These are completely different properties from last time. Um and so uh once you've heard them, they will go back before the board uh with whatever recommendation you give based on, and I believe both of them are class two, if I recall correctly. Uh the historic commission is recommending class two uh uh as uh for both of these properties.
Steve, just to clarify again, for class two, um it is uh allowed for the uh building owner to make changes inside.
That is absolutely correct. It were, there's, there was nothing in our ordinance that um basically said that they can't do what they need to do inside to make the home livable or usable for them. Um the the idea was is that the historic value of the property itself, we wanted to keep up as much as possible. Now, I will tell you, many of these homes, I can't speak to the two tonight, I've not been in them, but many of the homes, the property owners paid special care to keep the interior as well as the exterior at that level. Um but the often what you're going to hear is from the historic commission is why there's, why there's historic value for this particular property in our town. Sometimes it's a unique architecture, that that may be the only one that's in our town um that's designed that way. Sometimes it may be um that it has a certain type of trim work. It might be that who was the owner of that property? So there's a variety of things. There are ten different uh criteria and it only has to meet one of those ten.
What's the difference between class one and class two?
Typically, class one actually would meet all the qualifications to be on the national historic registry. Class two does not have to meet that.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Did you receive any paperwork on these properties?
Yeah.
Okay, um the first one that you.
Please, please state your name.
Oh, Kathy Cavalier, three thirteen Oak Hill Lane. Uh member of the historic commission, president of Newtown Square Historical Society. Uh the first property listed here is five seventy-one North Newtown Street Road, um also known as the James Price House. And if you've lived here a long time, you'd know it as Dr. Giuliani's house. Uh practicing vet since uh the sixties, I think, or seventies, um up until twenty, he lived there till twenty twenty-two. Um that home sits at the corner of Saint David's Road and North Newtown Street. You'd see it as you pull up, it's right up at the street. There's a barn. And also, there's a set of ruins there that are stone from the seventeen, it was, the house was built, the original piece, it's seventeen-ten and seventeen-thirty-four, and then it was added on in eighteen-ten. A much more extensive Georgian-style architecture at that time. So it was one of the wealthier properties and it was part of the Viola section. And I don't, if you've lived here, you've know, the Viola would include that corner, the Wheelwright Shop, which you probably recognize as the red building with the wheel. Um the little white house between the two is a farmhouse. And then there was a shop, and then there was the post office, the Viola Post Office, which is the the part of the ruins on the Giuliani, I'll call it the Julie James Price property. Um all, as I said, it was built in the seventeen hundreds. Um added on to in eighteen-ten, it re- it retains most, all of the architectural details. Um it's been up for sale, so I was able to go inside. Um and it has been maintained, and it was up until twenty twenty-two, when the owner um passed away and his son sold um the property. So it meets, um if you have the page, I have the criteria one, two, seven, eight, and ten. Um the cultural characteristics strike basically described as part of our township. Um and part of the development and heritage of our township, that property was part of a Penn Grant in late sixteen hundreds. Um it's associated with an event of importance um in the township, and basically it was the beginning of settlements in Newtown Township in the seventeen hundreds. And as a center for um the town, that was one of the centers. There's one further up at Newtown. Uh Goshen and and uh North Newtown Street Road is another town center. And these were all along North Newtown Street Road. We had seven as the property is a part or related to a commercial center, park, community, or other distinctive area, which should be preserved according to a historic, cultural, or architectural motif. As I said, the home is beautifully um had been beautifully maintained, Georgian um architecture, everything inside was, because it was inspected in twenty twenty-two for sale, it uh it passed the inspection and it had no problems um to go forward with the sale. Oh, it's a familiar visual feature of the neighborhood community or township, which it is, and the barn as well. Um and it also exemplifies social or historical heritage of the community. So it fit quite a few of our criteria. Um it is, the property owner um was notified of the application, and that is written on here. Um and did object to the property being listed.
They didn't.
Did object. She did, she did object, yes. Um originally, she did not when she owned it. Now that it's for sale and it's there's, there were some issues with property extensions and trying to build a practice there. And it was uh, so she, she now has it up for sale. And it, part of the sale is, I think, mentioning that it can be demolished. Which is why we added this one on um early on.
Where did you get that information about it being demolished, potentially?
Oh, it's in the, it's in the advertisement for the sale. So if you go to Realtor dot com or you go to any of the Realtor
Yeah.
sections, it will say, build your dream home, live in a historic house, or demolish and build your dream home.
Okay.
So um did you have other questions about, I mean, I have so much information, I don't know if you want to hear all the little details, but.
The the property owner, the owner of, the current owner of the property does not want the historic designation for the property, is that correct?
Correct. She believes it wouldn't.
Why don't they want um?
She believes that it will inhibit her ability to sell.
Yes, because it won't be.
It will be deemed historical, then it will, it will people to demolish it.
It has always, it was deemed historic by the Delaware County Planning Commission nineteen eighty-four survey, so it had always, it has a plaque. So it has always been known as a very historic building. The plaque is embedded, I think, on the one wall.
A lot of commentary here about it being functionally obsolete and a lot of deferred maintenance.
And what?
Deferred maintenance.
Oh, her letter. Yes, yes. And I think she purchased in twenty twenty.
Doctor Giacomo.
So just speaking openly, the house is up for sale and now the historic society wants to make it historically unable to be.
Well, we started this procedure when, um Steve, this this one's been, this isn't, we didn't start this recently.
How long ago did you start?
Back when she purchased and was very favorable and joined the historic society. She wanted to maintain it historically and we supported that and to. And we supported that and to have a veterinary practice, because Ray was a vet.
Wasn't that her plan to put her, her practice there, and that didn't happen?
No, and that, we supported that at the time, and that is when I put the application in.
Went through zoning hearing.
Went through zoning hearing.
But it's up for sale now.
Yes, this happened in recent, yes, and then she.
So it sells tomorrow.
You'll have a new owner.
Yeah. So this, you know.
Well, the Delaware County Plan Commission did approve these as well, that it went there last week.
Approved the classification?
Yes.
Okay.
What does that mean to us?
They recommend, they, they're doing the same recommendations that you are.
But then it has to go back, correct?
And it'll go back to the supervisors.
So there's really no approval?
No, not till it goes to the supervisors and they have a hearing and then they vote to put the property in the, into the ordinance.
I'm saying, much like the last one, we might say, hey, we make a recommendation to approve, it's meaningless. Compared to the Board of Supervisors.
I, for one, love historical houses, I, I lived down the street in a house that was built in eighteen-ninety-three. You know, it has all the historical value, I refurbished it, the whole thing, and it's just, you know, I. I believe that if we're, you know, pushing for this and it gets sold, you know, like, I just. I think that, you know, this might not come through in the, in the, in the timing of, of the sale of that.
We, we could make a recommendation that the classification be put on.
Correct.
Right, and in the timeframe that it gets to the final approval process. The house may be sold and.
It's, the approval still goes forward, it's regardless of who owns it, this process, yeah.
Maybe this purview, Paul, maybe a little bit of purview here legally. There's planning recommendations going to the board.
Yeah, I.
Legally, are we gonna run ourselves into a lawsuit?
Well, I, I, I won't, I won't say you will.
You could.
I, I strung, and, and when we were considering the historic ordinance. And, and Mr. Nice is well aware of this, I was not in favor of it, I believe that when we legislate. To restrict a property owner's use of his property, that we are on a very precarious position. However, the, the ordinance did pass, they do have the ordinance. I will, I will say unequivocally, if the present property owner is not in favor of the, of the historic certification, I will not support it. I will support what the property owner wants to do with their property, and I will not support a vote to make a recommendation that this, that, I, I would vote no.
If the property owner were saying, yes, I want it, I'd feel a lot different.
And that's what we had last month, we had two that the property owners both were very supportive of it, and I don't have a problem with that. And I think, you know, it's unfortunate because the Historic Society of the Township does a lot of great work.
Fantastic.
They do a lot of research, they have, I mean, I'm very impressed with the information that they have. But I don't like the government telling a property owner what they can and cannot do with the property that they own. When they bought this property, they didn't have those restrictions. So now, now, in this particular circumstance, we know the property is up for sale, so we're gonna impose a restriction on somebody that's gonna buy the property?
It's a minor, it's a minor.
Marketability of the property.
It's a minor restriction, they have to take out the same permits.
That's relative.
And, no, it isn't. It's a step that's placed, so it gives them one more step. It's, I think owed a historic home like that, that you do have a step, it should be a little more difficult. To just come in and tear down, or a listener would have more historic homes on that property. And they were torn down, there, and developers will be, that is part of the thing. The reason that we want to protect some, put some barriers in place, and in the end, they may still succeed. And that's part of what's in our ordinance, it is not a strict ordinance. It allows for the process to go forward, and the homeowner still has the rights.
I heard the word demolish earlier in the conversation. How's that word factor in with this decision?
It, it really doesn't, it's, it's basically, is the home historic or not?
Let her talk for a second, miss.
Can I, can I?
Sorry, say that again?
It doesn't, it's basically, we are here to determine, is the home historic or not, does it meet one?
Can the property owner, though, right now demolish their home?
I guess they could, Steve could answer, they could take a permit if they wanted. She could have, she could have come and she.
Andy?
Uh, right now?
Yeah.
Under the current ordinance?
Yeah.
Not without going through this process.
Wait, I'm saying the homeowner right now without historical designation, can I demolish my home?
Yes.
Can she demolish her home?
Yes.
So with this on it, would she be able to demolish her home?
There would be a procedural step in place before that happened.
What kind of?
What did that find of that?
The step is, they would have to come before the Historical Committee. And present their case before that permit would be.
Well, the Historical Society has an influence on their desire to not have that property.
It's Historic Commission.
Hold on, let me finish.
They would act as.
Let me, Jack.
Using them.
Excuse me?
The Historic Society and the Historic Commission are totally separate.
I got it, but the either Historical Society, what are they in the business of? They're in business of preserving properties.
To the extent that it's reasonable, but not to what you're saying at any cost.
I understand, there's undue influence throughout the world and all kinds of things, the Historical Society wants to preserve that property. That's why you're here, you're here asking to preserve that property.
As part of the Historic Commission, there are.
Bingo.
Seven of us.
That's exactly my point.
But not everyone.
Right now, I can demolish my property, she can demolish her property. You're putting a barrier to her be having the ability to demolish her property, fair?
Yes.
Okay, that's my point.
It is fair, so, I mean, that is the.
I'm not saying it's fair to do it, I'm just saying that's what you want to do.
We want an extra, yes, some extra.
That's what you wanna do, you wanna put a restriction on that homeowner's property.
That is what our.
Sale right now.
That is what our ordinance was created for.
I know, right now, she can demolish your property.
Support.
Right now, she can demolish your property.
You can yell what you want, it's not gonna be, you're not gonna influence that.
If she allowed you to demolish your property right now.
That's the township's decision.
Can she?
It takes.
Yes, you are asking to.
Not, she did not do it. If she wanted to demolish, she could have done that last year, right?
So, let me, let me, let me. Then answer, she doesn't wanna answer the question?
Let me, let me. If I can interject.
Screaming at me, so if you say it calmly, I might get it.
If I, if I.
Be off then.
If, if I can interject, I, I, I wanna, I wanna be clear that the. Uh, I, it does not keep a homeowner from potentially still taking the action. So I, I do, I do wanna make sure that, I wanna make sure you understand as a, as a commission. But I, so the homeowner can still come in and ask and fill out a permit to do a demolition permit. Of whatever step it wants, like.
This is if a class two designation is put on the property.
If the class two.
Let's, let's just start with that, if a class two designation gets put on, then.
This property, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
But then they have to go in front of the.
So they would go before, let me, let me explain if I can, they would go before the plan, uh, they go before the, um. Historic Commission, and the Historic Commission would hear their case. The Historic Commission would then, just like you do, make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors, they would make a decision up or down whether or not that permit would be granted, that is the process. So the ultimate decision would then fall back there. The purpose of going before the, the real purpose before going before the Historic Commission is for the Historic Commission. To have ninety days to come up with a plan, to hopefully allow that homeowner to make a decision to preserve that property. If they can't come up with a plan, they, you know, they may say, what if we allow the homeowner to do X? What if we allow the homeowner to do Y? And if the property owner, whether new or old, wanted to do that. And we could, they could convince that property owner to preserve that property, they may go before the board and change their mind, they may not want to demolish the property.
That clarification is very helpful.
But, but understand that the Board of Supervisors, if a person comes in and, you know. Says the property is unsustainable as it is, the Board would, could very well still make the decision. That the property would get a demolition permit, and Andy would issue the demolition permit. The difference between a class two property and your property that you sit today really is the fact. That today Andy can issue that permit, if, that you come in, you meet all the qualifications of whatever the demolition permit. Because it's historic, it would just have to go before the Historic Commission, there's a ninety-day calendar, a clock that starts. And the Board has to make a decision, if it goes beyond the ninety days and the decision's not made, Andy has to issue the demolition permit.
Oh, but wait, 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 wait. Steve, isn't there other restrictions, you have to maintain the exterior, you can't do certain changes, you have to keep the historic integrity? All mandated under the ordinance?
Yeah, I, I, I believe it, I believe it should be said that.
It's, it's not just the ability to raise the property. You have to maintain, once it's determined to be historic property, then you have to keep the historic integrity. You can't change the windows, you can't change the door, you can't change the door.
I, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't know the ordinance.
I do, I hope Leonard and Alteria and I drafted this, so I do know what's in it, and that is not, we made this so that it wasn't strict. So that when people do come before us and they want to make changes, as the Haitian and the Townsend's did for the Haitian House on Goshen. Building in addition, it was, they, they showed us, they, they made their modifications for themselves, we approved it just based on their plans. We didn't even have to have them present, they did come to the meeting. So what I'm saying is, we may, it's not a strict ordinance, we're not going into the windows, that's the ordinance of two thousand-two you're going back to. We, this has been modified, you could probably speak to the Board of Supervisors, Leonard Alteria, as I said, knows it inside and out, he drafted it with me. So it is much milder in many ways, and it gives the homeowner many more rights, that was the point of it.
But there is.
And that's how we got it passed.
There is a review process by the Historical Commission.
Yeah, that's it.
We just had, we had one that, that just passed on, uh, go, I think it was Goshen.
Yes.
So that property came, came in as a building permit, recognized it, that it had historical significance. It went to, to the Historical Commission, they reviewed it, came back to me once they acquired their, uh, got the permission to move forward. I issued the permit.
Here's a hypothetical demolition permit. One of the owners comes in today, applies for demolition permit, if it were covered. They would have to provide a, a historical report, but that permit is issued by you.
I issued the permit once I received the approval from the Commission.
From?
From the Historical Commission.
They issue a report to you, they don't have a right to say you can't issue the permit. They may say, we don't like this, we don't want you to issue the permit, but I don't see that you're bound to, to that.
Are you legally? That's why I'm talking about the lawsuit and the requirements before, like, or, like, do you?
My job is to comply with the ordinance, so it's gonna go through the procedural steps. It needs to go, no different than if it were zoning violation, so I, I review building plans every day.
Right.
If there's a zoning infraction, I send them to the zoning hearing board, I don't issue the permit. I don't issue the permit till I get a, a, a thumbs up from the zoning hearing board. They grant a variance to do X, I issued the permit based upon that approval.
But they issue, the, the Historical Commission issues a recommendation.
Yep.
There's nothing that obligates you to follow that recommendation.
Other than the other procedural step that it goes, that recommendation goes to the Board, and then they make that final decision.
So the Board has to come to you to tell you to do.
The Board has to make the ultimate decision.
So, so to clarify, I've been trying to say something for quite a while. Her group, Commission, Society, whatever it's called, does not have authority to approve anything. They have the same purview to make recommendations as this group does.
Correct.
True? Second question. Back to the concept of the demolition, whether it has a class two designation or it does not. Is it fair to say that if it did not have the class two designation? The process to demolish the house as the homeowner would theoretically be a little easier. Than if it did have the class two designation. If it has further to that, if it did have the class two designation, there would be another.
Layer.
Verbal layer, right? For it to.
He said.
To be able to do that, correct?
Correct.
My, okay, so from my perspective, having that, being a property owner. And having that designation and trying to sell that property. That can be perceived as a form of an encumbrance in the marketability of the property, right?
Fair, agreed.
From my perspective, by way of background, I sell real estate, okay? So I have some perspective on that, so that's my view of that, I love historic properties. But I'm looking at it from the perspective of if I owned it and I wanted to do something with it, right? Back to the point that's been made earlier tonight a couple of times about. Giving, not being able to let people do what they would like to do within certain boundaries, right, with their property, right, it is private property.
And I think, let's say you had a property owner that was in full agreement, like this property in question, yeah, you know what, put it in. If my house is historic property and I wanna put it in there, it's my right, I can put it in there. If I wanna turn around and sell it with that on the deed, that it's a historical property, so be it, that's my right. But if somebody doesn't wanna do it, I don't think they should do it.
Then we would have to add more criteria. To say, if it encumbers my sale of my house, it's not historic. This is purely saying a building or a structure or a landscape or a resource is historic. That is all we are deciding, we're not deciding demolition, we're not deciding what they're gonna do with it. It's, we have a list of over, about a hundred properties that were designated by the county in nineteen-eighty-four as historic. Many of them have plaques and you've probably seen them everywhere, so this is just kind of the, the, the method that we have. Other townships included all those in their ordinance, we did not. So we have to come before you every time we want to add one into our ordinance. And so our ordinance doesn't, isn't very strict, our criteria though, no, that is what should be addressed. When we're talking about what's historic, the criteria, does it meet those criteria, and I know you like, it should be like. A, B, C, and D, one through ten, does it meet one of those, one or more? And if it does, then it's designated historic, not, hmm, is this gonna make it harsh to sell down the road? Because actually, that's been proven false, that historic homes sell well. This one probably has a lot of other criteria involved, but that's not true.
How about adding a requirement for, for this change, for this declaration of a structure as historic? That the property owner agrees with that? Because if the property owner does not agree, then we are facing this problem every time.
They would have to change the ordinance, that the Board of Supervisors would have to change the ordinance.
For what?
There only what, I'm sorry.
I know, it's not.
Wait.
Here.
Hi, I'm Donna Cole with thirty, thirty-two Surrey Drive. I'm also, I'm also on the store commission, and I grew up in Newtown Square, and I'm also a Realtor. So, so, um, basically, and I have sold houses in Philadelphia and historic homes. So I definitely, there's the criteria that we have in Newtown Township is completely different from Philadelphia. So you, so it's there, you have to go against every window change, whether there's millions in the windows, you know all about that. So, so, so it's, it's different, so basically what we're just looking to do is, it's, in, in effect, almost think of it as a cooling off period. We wanna put people, you know, identify these houses into the class two. If somebody wants to tear down their house, we, you know, we want the opportunity to present solutions to them. So, because some people may, uh, like, for example, I toured your home before you bought it. And builders were looking at it, and they were gonna tear it down, and I had the opportunity to have a tour of it. It's amazing what you did to your home, so to have that opportunity for a home to get lucky, to find a homeowner. Now, the current property that we're discussing on Newtown Street Road, um, I don't know, you've all driven by it, I don't know if you've actually, you know, stopped and looked at it. Um, but that property there, it's actually for sale, uh, the older house. But there's also two additional listings with a new construction home of over two million dollars on it, so two versions of a house, so. Um, so when you look at it, like, you know, if, if the name, if the owner wants to, you know, tear down something. You know, we're just looking for the opportunity to have that ninety days to classify it as the option, and some people are looking to be on this list. But, you know, if it's not on the list, you know, I guess, as you said, in many townships, it's all your. But, you know, if it's not on the list, you know, I guess, as you said, in many townships, it's all you're on because of the criteria historic.
From the get-go.
But we've missed so many opportunities throughout the township, like, because I, I always go see, I can, I can, I just have videotapes of all the old houses that are torn down. Um, so, but we just missed that, all these opportunities. So here it's an opportunity to preserve a property, get ninety days before something just gets torn down and see if we can present solutions where it's at. Could it be, could it be commercial? Could, could that be, you know, deemed as maybe like an in-law suite if somebody does build something? Just to look at some opportunities, to at least have something that we could offer people, not to limit people with their property. But this house that we're talking about right now, it's a substantial historic property in the township. So I think we should at least look at the opportunity.
Thank you. I think I'm starting to hear some difference. Earlier on, we talked about this concept of, and we're not right now, demolition.
Hmm.
We talked about if a property owner wants to come in, they can demolish their house right now. Bam, done.
Hmm.
We talked about, we were hearing before that they might, that would be restricted if they were placed on this. I'm kind of hearing that's different. Like, would it?
It's similar but different. It is confusing. So it basically.
So you're basically saying, hey, this house, let's say this lady doesn't want to be on it.
It's lack of clarity, mate. Or if anybody says it's lack of clarity, mate. Yeah, well, it is, it is confusing. I.
So if she wants to be on the list, this property in question wants to be on the list, fine, go on the list and abide by the restrictions. I don't care. You're right.
So, and they, this house has been on the list since the eighties.
But she doesn't, she's a property owner though, right now that doesn't want to be on the list. So I land there right now. But if she wanted to, she can. So if she wants to go on, go ahead. Are you saying whether she wants to or not, you want the township to put it on?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what they're saying, you know.
I don't want to agree with that.
This is a two hundred and ninety-year-old plus.
I'll agree to ninety-day pause.
Buy the house.
I'll agree to a ninety-day pause, but no restriction on the back end of that. I'm saying I'll, I'll kind of, hey, we'll make her wait ninety days. All right, maybe you can get me there. But on the back end of that, she should have full rights to do whatever she wants to.
She does.
I think, I, I.
All right, I heard differently earlier.
That's what you're saying. Correct, Steve? That's, if somebody wants to come in and, you know, if they're on the list and they, you know, we present our solutions and, and we're, they're not able to come up with anything or they, they want to proceed.
Let me ask you this hypothetically.
Hmm.
This class two has its restrictions. So how about if the property owner of each of those class two buildings agrees to place it there with all the potential restrictions? That's great.
Yes.
How about creating hypothetically, class three? Well, class three has no restriction whatsoever, but it has a declaration that this house is a historic house from whenever. Okay? Then perhaps, depending on who the homeowner is, maybe move to class two if, if they will. The problem we have with that, I guess, few of us at least, uh, is that, um, it interferes with the right of the homeowner to properly use their property. And I also have a problem with that. So if there are, there is that hypothetical class three when there are no restrictions, like if my house is declared historic like that, I'd be happy. But not that my house is old, but anyhow. Uh, it's, it's, uh, I don't feel right with the restrictions.
It's not common for someone to want to demolish their home. So when someone doesn't want to be on the ordinance, the only reason we have found out what wants to be a class two is because that is maybe what they want to do down the road or they, or developers buying it. We haven't had any private homeowners who live in their homes who want to demolish. They want to add on. And we're very liberal with all that. So what I'm saying is changing your footprint, changing your house, we're talking, we're, demolish and changing your home are totally two different things. And if you demolish all the, the historic structures, um, the paper mill house was ready for demolition and it was restored to be the history center. So what I'm saying, it, you, it can't always be in the hands of the owner, if they're a developer or wanting to develop.
Sometimes a house, I'm not talking about a large acreage, like a large plot that the developer wants to subdivide and build several houses and that, that sticks it. Uh, sometimes there are houses in this township which are old, small, in bad shape. They don't fit the neighborhood anymore. If, if a house like that is designated as a historic house, this creates a burden on the homeowner because the homeowner can only sell a house like that to a builder who will, who would remove it and put a bigger, modern house instead. I know because my neighbor went through that. So, um, I, again, I have a problem on a restriction that prohibits the homeowner from.
But it doesn't in the end. It doesn't prohibit it. They still just go through one more step. They can still do what you just said. That can still be done.
The owner has to come in front of your commission.
Oh.
That's what I understand, your commission.
To each one of these to do this. So, yes.
Yeah, but we.
There's still the ninety-day period that you're looking for. And as we've seen, again, hypothetically, if someone, you know, were to put a house on the market, right? You know what's happened to interest rates in the last ninety days? They've gone up a lot, right? So that's where I think it comes back to, as a homeowner, I, I don't feel comfortable telling them that if they are not in agreement with the designation, that we can just say, you're getting this now.
I'd like to call the question on this particular property. I think we were just kind of arguing amongst ourselves.
Fair.
I, I, I think either, do you want us to vote on this or not?
Uh, yes, you can vote on it and, and that's fine.
I want to ask if anybody else wants to say.
Well, I don't, I don't, I, this is, this is a, I don't know, we have to ask for public comment on.
Yeah. You'll be next.
Let's hear this lady and.
Is she on the commission?
It would affect my house. I live in a house that was built in seventeen forty-one. And if I was, and I have a responsibility as a, oh, sorry, Francie Strathman, thirty-eight forty, Great Evil Road.
And are you on the commission?
No, I'm not.
The society.
I'm not part of that. I'm not part of any of this.
Never matter.
As a homeowner of a very old house and a historic house and one that I feel that I have a responsibility for, which I think most people in houses that were built in the seventeen hundreds feel that way, that you have a responsibility. So ninety days, if somebody's asking me and they're coming to me and saying, we want you to wait ninety days and listen to us because we want to save something for this township, I don't see how he can object to that because look at the township. I've been here for, my family's been here for five generations and they're all rolling in their graves and all the demolished stuff that's happening in this township. So if we want to look like what's over, around us, then demolish all a hundred and some, I mean, get rid of them. You don't, if nobody cares about them anymore.
But that's.
You're only asking us for ninety days as a homeowner. Ninety days to have somebody come to you and plead their case for the township.
Look, we all agree here. We all want to preserve historic houses and all that. We, we just do not want to, uh, put restrictions on property owners.
It's not every, ninety days is not anything to add.
Does that prevent them from demolishing? Do you have to maintain and restore the existing structure?
No, I don't have to.
Like the facade, is that, like, if I bought it tomorrow and this was put on there, I would have to come to you and then it would, you guys would have a ninety-day review. You would come back and say, hey, you have to restore the house, go back to the state it was or give all your recommendations.
No.
But it's just that ninety days.
All right, guys, I think we need to move on.
It's a, it's a falsehood that many people don't understand our ordinance. They've not read it. And that is what people think of, very restricted. But that's not how we got it passed. So that, and, and just go back to the homeowners, the two properties, they aren't really, there's no one living in this home. There's, so it was bought to use as commercial, but it didn't fall, so it fell through and there's no one living there. And in the second home, there's no one as well. So that is part, it's not a homeowner who's coming and I'm forcing them to do this.
There are many townships around here.
mitigating circumstance.
There are many townships around here that have houses like mine that would tell me, I can't do this to my windows. I have to use copper. I have to do this. But none of that exists in this township. None of it. So there are no restrictions other than let us try to save saved.
I think we need to move on.
Okay.
So.
Yes, I guess the question is, do we favor making a recommendation to place this property over the, over the property owner's request on the historic, they, class two list? I vote no.
And we are only talking about.
One property, five seventy-one.
Yes, with the property owner saying, uh, no, I'm going to say, I, I don't agree with this.
You second.
I second it.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't have my, I mean, just be clear. You're just making a recommendation to the board. I want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Right.
You're making a recommendation of not supporting this.
Correct. I guess that would be the best way to.
I just want to make sure that we're clear so that we make sure we put the action memo together the way you're saying.
Okay, we have a recommendation, uh, so we're not supporting and we have a second.
I support.
Support the motion or support the?
I support them.
So two, one?
Yes.
And, um, is that?
I'm not.
You have a, you have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Right. We have a motion and a second, uh, so.
And not recommend.
So I, what I'm understanding is the motion is to not recommend
Right.
this property be a class two resource, the board take it up as a hearing for a class two resource.
We're not recommending it. The board can take it up if they want, but we're not recommending it.
Yeah, so.
We can't stop the board from considering.
No, I'm not saying, no, I'm saying you're just making the recommendation that it not be a class two resource.
Correct.
Based on that, you should take your vote based on that. And make sure everybody understands what it is that you're voting on.
So, uh, I also do not support. Deck?
I, I agree with that position.
Okay, so we have Paul against two?
I, I'm with Paul.
Oh, okay, so. Five, one.
Five, so just for clarification, we have actually five yeas for the motion.
Correct, not supporting.
Do not support.
That's how I'm understanding it. That's why I just want to make sure we're getting it right.
I, for the record, I could support something like this in a different framework.
I think we could recommend that the, consider attending the ordinance from.
Well, that's a good point.
The ordinance of nine yeas.
I can.
All right. That's correct.
So there's another property.
Yeah.
All right.
Let's, let's do it again.
Yeah, let's, because you're gonna.
Wait, is it? Wait, we, we can make this very short. What's the property address?
Thirty-two oh one Westchester Pike.
Okay, does the property owner oppose this?
If, yes. Are they still the owner, Margaret?
Uh, we're in the process of.
Uh, ladies, can you please come to the podium?
Yeah, they do not.
Earlier point, are you sure you want us to vote on this or do you want to come back? Should have come back.
I'm Margaret O'Conne. I also live in Newtown Square at one fifteen Beechwood Road, but I'm here as the attorney for Deborah Liddon, the executor of the estate of Kathleen Contestabille, the record owner of this property. Settlement is this week and I, we have agreed that we would come here on behalf of both buyer and seller to oppose this. This, this question, this property was considered, uh, there was a hearing in front of the Historic Commission in November, at which I raised objections on behalf of my client. And the word, the commission tabled the motion because one of the major objections that we have is the condition of the property. It's a two-hundred-year-old property, but the maintenance has been lacking for the last couple decades. The roof leaks. There are cracks in the foundation. There are cracks in the walls. That we went for a U N O and the inspector flunked this so badly because he would not walk inside the house. He thought it was dangerous for him to walk into this house. I visited Ms. Contestabille every, every week for the last couple of years of her life. She was dying of lymphoma. And she had other issues that made her, um, feel unsafe if she wasn't in her house. I wore a mask because I'm allergic to mold and the place is just full of mold and trirot. And yet this would put, this would put a buyer, making them jump through hoops to try to make this safe. And I can't say that even trying to preserve that structure is safe. Right now, it's, it's been for years an eyesore on Westchester Pike. It's overgrown with bushes and trees that have also helped, you know, create some of those cracks in, in the structure. Um, it just hasn't been maintained. Um, and this woman was way too sick to undertake it, even if she even had the mental health abilities to have done anything. Uh, and in my humble opinion, if you want to set a group of resource houses, do it before somebody dies and wants to sell it. Put them on a list so everybody knows about it. They aren't. There's five historic houses in the class two. I had no idea what it was. My notice from the Historic Commission says, uh, see attached. There was nothing attached here to say what the criterion were. From the, so that's a defective notice for starters. Um, the only thing I could glean from the meeting in November was that apparently uh, it was the type of, of house that it was, but it's in such bad condition that having to try to rehabilitate and get rid of the, um, mold, which is a health risk, um, to use that, it is just nuts.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we, we obviously oppose that and the building inspector's report is like my best exhibit because he flunked it on every single way, saying it was totally unsafe. And there's a second structure on the property. There's new garage doors on the front and the, the side walls and the rear wall and the roof heavily paved in on the cars that were in this garage. Demolition sounds like a great solution. We don't want to have to spend time doing that because if kids, the place is unoccupied, if kids were wandering, they could be seriously hurt on this property and we don't want that to happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cavalieri, we, we don't need to go through the same dialogue again. Um, i- if you don't mind, I, I respect and appreciate your position.
I just want to say one thing, though.
Please.
Just, but when I, when we bring properties here, it is basically just to get them designated historic resources in the town. It's not to save them, to make somebody rehab them, to buy them. It, we have the list already. The county gave us that. That is where the properties all come from. And so we're just going through them and we are labeling them all as class two resources. So that is our objective and it's not to prevent people from buying them and doing what they may want to do or find out has to be done. But is it a historic building or not? And that is never answered. And that is the only question we're here for.
So the issue is whether there are restrictions on an historic house or not. If there are no, no restrictions, I don't think anybody would object. No, nobody would object.
No.
What, didn't we object?
Restrictions.
Yeah, demolition.
I, I, look at.
How would you, a situation like that, a house is falling apart, what do you recommend to do then?
No, I think it comes through a process.
What, what's a process?
What do you mean?
Well, there's many different points of view. The point is, there's a process in place for every ruins are designated historic on Paper Mill Road. Well, there are many different points of view. The point is, there's a process in place for every ruins are designated historic on Paper Mill Road. We have many places that are not able to be lived in. They're just remnants of what was there and it's historic. Okay, and so it doesn't have to be livable. You then go through the process of saying, okay, it's not worth doing. Or it's not, or I wanna buy it and tear it down, which isn't the case of the person who wants to do a commercial. Tell it, hey, then put up a parking lot, which, you know, that, I'm not here to stop that neighbors might, but.
Mister Chairman, I'm gonna again request that we call the question and let's vote on this issue. We know the issues. We know the parties' positions. I'm going to move again to suggest that we not recommend. This.
A class two designation on the property.
Designation on this property that we not recommend to the board of supervisors. I, if, if the property owner opposes the designation, then I don't believe it's appropriate to impose additional restrictions. As minor as they may be, additional restrictions on that property. That's how I move.
I second that. Anybody on the board, uh, hold the same, uh, approach, please say aye.
Aye.
And against?
I would, closing that, I would recommend that this issue of the historic, historic society, which is important. Maybe figure out a better way with township, and I don't know where that is comprised. I know the comprehensive plan may touch on it. The system that we have does not seem good and I wish it were better. I wish it were more streamlined or. Efficient for owners as well as the society because it is a shame when historic properties don't. We're in a tough spot right now with the current framework.
I would think you'd get the, you'd get the property owner's consent before you come to try and designate the property as a class two property. If you get the property owner's consent, then I have an issue.
Or I don't know, get the township to agree, hey, deem this historic, we'll give you a rebate on your taxes or something.
I was gonna say that earlier. I mean, people do historic tax credits on buildings in the center of the city all the time.
All that, but right now you've got an owner saying, no, I don't want it. I can't make them do it. I would, could recommend that.
You're making a, a ninety day, something that, that like the property being subdivided. And it's, and then you just.
When you have a house falling apart, what will the ninety days give you? All the property owners?
Has anybody, it's not listed for sale on the public law.
Why not spend the ninety days before you come before this board? Why not spend it before you even present the application?
Putting it on the market or not putting it on the market is the current property owner's right to do. You know, they don't have to put it on the market if they don't want to.
If you are with a historic. That's importantly what we are identifying and for some reason it's very old and.
Need some clarification. Some things need to be clarified, I think.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Just so, I know you're gonna close, but just so the planning commission knows, uh, I'm asking Heather to forward you all. The ordinance in its entirety, just so that, because you're going to see. The, I mean, we probably are going to see a hundred of these over the next so many months and years. And so I just wanna make sure that you are aware of the entire ordinance as we go through it, that you have a chance to review it. If you decide that you look at it and you want us to invest in bringing the solicitor in. So that you have a better understanding of the ordinance, please let me know and we will do that.
Perhaps we can amend the ordinance.
And, and maybe you will make that recommendation.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, yes, sir? For that?
About thirty-two oh-one.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I live right, my name is Robert Hamilton. I'm on Eleven Baron Road. And that property is right across from me and it, and it stretches back a long way from Westchester Pike. And I, I'm trying to find out if that, if that, if that, uh, property sells. What's possible? What are they allowed to do with that extended property? There's nothing there now. It's overgrown. So I'm trying to find out, like, what's, what can they legally, can they build apartments there? Can they put a Wawa in there? What can I expect?
You should speak to the codes office and they could probably.
District requirements. And if they try to subdivide, that would require them to file subdivision plan.
Is, is it zoned, is it zoned, uh, residential? Say that again.
It's zone residential.
Okay, okay, okay. Which, could they put apartments in there?
They, they would have to comply with the R-three zoning district requirements, which doesn't currently allow apartments on that lot size.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I guess that's it.
Okay, um. Any additional?
Do you have additional questions, sir?
Yeah, I did. Is, can the zoning change?
Can ask for a zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
But if you're interested in the property, you may want to investigate a little further.
I'm sorry, sorry, I.
I'm saying if you're interested in that particular property, you may want to, to investigate a little further. Right now, we cannot answer those questions.
I thought maybe you could, but thank you, thank you for all your.
Okay, uh.
Any additional business?
Any additional business right now? No, so, um, motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Sider.